Coverage coming up over in old, those two ladies helped us put everything together, compile all the information that you provide us. And obviously you have this handsome man over here, Jack Coffey, who's been your safety rep for a lot, Jack.
I've been serving the northwest region of Texas since 2016, but I've been with TAC since 1999. I first was serving over in the northeast part of Texas, but they decided to give me a promotion and moved me here to the northwest, and I've loved it ever since. And I'm looking forward to working with y'all this year. We have some special plans in mind for Hail County that I think you're really gonna like. And welcome, congratulations for being here, we really appreciate it. And we know your time is valuable, so I think you're gonna get a lot of information out of this workshop that you're really gonna like. Thank you.
Another individual that we're very lucky to have as part of our team is Carmen Knapp, and she's a former chief deputy up in Moore County, Duluth, Texas. Unfortunately for us, Carmen had a trip down to the coast, so Carmen is sitting in some beach right now. So it was either beach or the penthouse, and we lost. But we're very excited to have Carmen on board. Carmen came as a driving simulator instructor for the law enforcement simulator, but we're very lucky to have her in this capacity. We're looking forward to that. Obviously, we met Rita, and like I said, Rita and I, we traveled, what's it, two weeks ago, three?
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago, and we had a blast, and obviously you can see Rita's experience in county government. She's able to communicate with anybody, whether judges' office, sheriffs, commissioners, you name it. She did a wonderful job. So I'm very excited to have her as part of my team. Other people that we want to know is Michaela Kaiser. She handles your liability and auto liability claims, so she's vital, and we're gonna be talking about auto liability today. Maribel Señor, she handles your public officials liability, your law enforcement liability claims. She's a vital part of our team. Brett Anderson, she's a property manager. Obviously, he's been extremely busy in 2021 with this unprecedented weather. And of course, Tanya Davis, claims administrator. So all these people, all the people here, we're working on your behalf. And we wanted to make sure that you know who we are, what is it that we do for you. And first, you know, one thing that I want you to keep in mind is that we can always be, reach out to the 1-800 number. And please let us know, give us an opportunity to see if we can help you address any issues. If we don't have the answer, we'll find somebody who does, and we'll try to do that. So, and I'm gonna email you this presentation, and there's gonna be the contact information for all of us in there. And then some of the coverages that we provide for the pool, and we want to thank you for your loyalty, we provide workers' comp, auto liability, auto physical, general liability, law enforcement, public officials, and the property coverage, which includes your crime. Right now, Hail County participates in all the lots of coverage, and there's some benefits to that that we're gonna be discussing here in a minute. But before we do that, I'm gonna turn it to Jack so he can do his presentation.
Okay. Now, in this presentation, I'm gonna share with you some information regarding hail damage to some of our county buildings and property. And this has been a big issue in 2020. And it's, the problem is not necessarily getting any better. And so we want to try to bring out some more awareness about what's causing this, and what you can do to better protect your county property and prevent hail losses in the future. So we're gonna talk a little bit about how you can better protect your vehicles and your property from hail damage. So we have the standard disclaimer here. This training is designed to provide general information about the subject matter covered. Neither TAC nor the trainer are engaged in rendering legal advice. If you need legal advice, TAC recommends that you seek the services of a competent attorney who is familiar with your specific situation. So this is the standard disclaimer we do for all training, just to let you know that we do not render any type of legal advice. Our objectives today, we're gonna talk about how you can avoid hail damage, how to identify hail damage to your vehicles and your roofs, discuss some of the considerations for work replacement, understand what you should expect from roofing vendors, and finally, how to file a claim if we do have any buildings or vehicles damaged as a result of hail. So let's find out how much you may or may not know about hail. So I have a, this is where y'all are gonna participate, because one of the things about participating is when you participate, you can win prizes. And we have lots of good prizes today. Right here, this is a chilling towel. We know how it gets outside right now, this time of year. You wet this towel, you wrap it around your neck, it's gonna make you feel real good. In addition to the chilling towels, we have first aid kits. We have some nice safety glasses, and these are the tinted variety, not the clear ones. We upgraded you to the tinted ones, okay? So you're gonna like that. Now, this is one of my all-time favorites, y'all. These are mechanic's gloves. These are real nice, these are kind of the thin leather ones. These are the heavy-duty leather ones. They even have the nice knuckle guards right across the top of the knuckles, right there, the finger guards. Heavy-duty, you'll love it, you will love it. In addition to that, you know, my road and bridge friends, they always like to have high-visibility shirt when they're working out there in the county right away, doing work. So we have some high-visibility shirts. We have some wonderful hats here to keep your guys cool. These are really nice. These are really, really nice. So we do have some good door prizes, and y'all, all of this must go before the end of the day. All of it must go, so we're not taking anything back. So we're gonna try to work real hard giving all this stuff away. So let's find out how much you may know about hail. So question number one. Severe thunderstorms are far more likely to produce tornado than hail. Is that true or false?
False.
False. False. False. False. That is correct. You know, with severe thunderstorms, we have updrafts, and with updrafts, that picks up that rainfall, and it's far more likely to produce hail than a tornado. The chances of producing a tornado in a severe storm is about 30%. Much more likely to have hail. Question two. Inside a storm, hailstones move like lottery balls in a tumbler.
True.
Is that true or false?
True.
Uh-oh, there's some hesitation here.
I'll say true.
True, that is correct. Because what happens is, is in those severe thunderstorms, you have the updrafts, and when the hailstones freeze, they just kind of tumble around in there until they get heavy enough, and then all of a sudden, they'll dump out. So that is true. Next question. In Texas, there's no such place as hail alley or tornado alley.
False.
False?
I'd say that.
Very good, that is false. Because you know what, guess what? Y'all live in the middle of tornado alley, hail alley, and I think y'all know that firsthand. We have a lot of hail, a lot of wind, and so we'll rake that smack in the middle of it. And you've known that for a long time. And finally, taking shelter in your car beneath an overpass during a hailstorm is a really good idea. True or false?
False.
False, that's right. The overpass is a likely place where you're likely to have an accident, okay? That's gonna be a bottleneck, okay? It's a choke point. So people who seek shelter underneath an overpass, that's really dangerous. What should you do? You should pull your vehicle off the roadway and get into a building where it's safe until the severe storm has passed. So going underneath an overpass, that's something we recommend, that's kind of dangerous. So definitely wanna get out of that vehicle and get into a safe building until the storm passes. So y'all did really good, really good. So let's talk about some of these hail reports. Severe hail reports, that data is collected by the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration, NOAA. And a severe hail report is considered hail that is one inch in size or larger, okay? The most common size hail is P, okay, in marble size, but severe hail is one-inch size and larger. And so you can see all across the United States where we have a lot of hail, which is right here in hail and tornado alley. And it really, it's kind of pressed in between the Rocky Mountains here on the left, the Appalachian Mountains here on the right. This whole center is where we have a lot of hail, tornadoes, high winds, okay? Right there in the middle of the United States. And this is the report from 2020, January 1st to the end of the year, December 31st. So a lot of data points there. We don't have a whole lot out on the west coast, but right here in Texas, we have a whole bunch. Now here's severe weather reports from January 1st, 2020 to the 31st. Again, lots of severe weather reports, okay? High winds, tornadoes, those types of things, all right here in the central United States. Now here's where we're gonna ask for your participation, and the winner gets to come up here and pick a prize, all right? So, severe weather report for 2020. You can see who came in second place, Georgia, with 979 severe weather reports. Of those 979, 75 were tornadoes, 64 were hail reports, and over here, 840 severe winds, okay? So let's look at Texas. Texas, as you can see, we came in number one in the nation for severe weather reports. We had a total of 827 winds, 102 tornadoes in Texas last year, 2020. Did you realize that? 102 tornadoes? That's a lot. So now what I'm gonna ask you to do is I want you to take a guess, how many severe hail reports did we have in Texas? Now, you can see what we had in some of these other states, 313 in Nebraska, 47 in Alabama, 377 in South Dakota, 64 in Georgia. What do you think we had in Texas? So I'm gonna go around each one of you.
400.
400.
500.
500.
473.
473.
550.
550.
477.
477.
700.
700.
600.
600.
456.
456.
750.
582.
582. Now, how'd you come up with that number?
Well, I just see the picture.
Jesse.
212.
212, okay. And the number may surprise you, but we had a total of 601, right there. 601 total severe hail reports for Texas last year, which gives us a grand total of 1,520 severe weather reports in Texas. You're the winner. Come on up.
Woo-hoo, Kenny.
Very Kenny.
Pick whatever you want, the chilling towel, the gloves, the hat, first aid kit. Drop the 40s by, now try it on. Make sure those gloves fit, that hat fits.
See if it works, Kenny. We want to demonstrate.
Make sure it's working good.
I always heard never trust a worker who wears gloves.
There you go.
I wanted, but I don't want it, so.
Oh, okay, great. That's a popular item. The guys love those gloves. All right, congratulations. We still gotta get rid of this rest of this stuff, so there's plenty of opportunities to win some more. Let's talk about tornado alley. Tornado alley starts in Texas, up to Oklahoma, Kansas, Nebraska, Wyoming, and Iowa. This whole area here is tornado alley. And you can see why it is tornado alley, because you have the warm, moist air from the Caribbean meets the dry air from west Texas, meets the cold air from Canada. And right here is where all your tornadoes, they spin up right here in this part of the country, tornado alley, okay? It's easy to see how it happens, the convergence of all this warm, moist air, and that's where they spin up. Hail alley, same thing. We have Texas here, Oklahoma, Kansas, Nebraska, Wyoming. This is hail alley right there. Okay, now we have another chance to win a prize right here. Severe weather climate disaster. I want you to think of all the bad weather events, hurricanes, tornadoes, that we've had here in Texas and across the US. Which weather event was the most severe and costly weather event of all time? So.
Hurricane.
Hurricane. Which one? Hurricane.
Harvey.
Harvey.
Katrina.
Katrina, okay, no worries, okay? Katrina? Harvey? Okay, anyone else? Come on. Come on.
I think Harvey, too.
Jesse, what do you think?
I would go Harvey.
Harvey, okay.
Harvey.
Harvey. Anyone else? Come on, someone's gotta get, think outside the box.
I guess we're not right.
Do you have a multiple choice?
The answer is. The answer is.
The freeze.
Bingo. Judge, you got.
Woo-hoo, Judge.
Congratulations. Do you remember February 2nd? I'm sorry, February 13th to the 17th? It was called Winter Storm Yuri, okay? It started out in the Pacific Northwest, it started out right here, and it moved quickly into the south part of the US. This is an image of snowfall that happened across the USA. For example, we had four inches here in Texas, seven inches there, 27 inches of snowfall here. I mean, this is, this is a satellite image of that storm event we had in February. Winter Storm Yuri, okay? This storm event, it covered 73% of the US in snow. Over 10 million people lost their power, okay? There are a total of 176 people who died as a result of that winter storm event. The blackout, which went across the USA, it resulted in $195 billion in damage. That event was the most costly devastating storm event we have ever had in the USA. I know at my house, I lost water and I lost electricity for four days, okay?
I guess when you scrape and snow off the sea wall, it doubles to dents.
So, so what I did at the coffee house, at the Josh Coffee House, you know, when you don't have a toilet to flush, that's kind of important to me, you know? I'm a safety person. I kind of like to use the, you know, restroom. Well, I went down, I got into my safety mode, right? Got into my, put on my safety hat, and said, honey, we're gonna get through this. So I go down to Home Depot, I buy five orange buckets, five orange buckets. I go to my brother's house, who does have water, and I fill up these five buckets with water, put my lid on top of them, okay? And I bring them back to my house, and I said to my wife, I said, now, honey, now we can finally flush our toilets, because we had no water, no electricity, nothing. So I said, here was my slogan, I said to my wife and my kids at home. I said, if it's yellow, let it mellow. If it's brown, flush it down. So that way, you wouldn't have stuff sitting in that toilet for a long period of time. Because four days without electricity, four days without water, you know, you gotta be able to use your restroom, you gotta be able to go, you know, use your facilities for sanitation. So we use those buckets from Home Depot with water, and we fill up our tanks, and that's what we use, you know, to flush everything down. So you get creative when, then without water or electricity for a number of days. You know, we didn't have a chance to eat a hot meal, we were eating a lot of sandwiches, peanut butter and jelly, you know? You just get creative when there's nothing, when there's nothing there available. So Judge, you won it with your, her, Winter Storm Yuri. Come up here and pick out a prize.
Or you can just pass me that hat.
The hat.
There you go.
I tell you what, as a person who's not having too much of it here.
I'll start saying, obviously, I don't have a hat.
That's something you, you appreciate. Yeah, there you go. So, so Winter Storm Yuri is the most costly weather event of all time at $195 billion is what it cost for all the blackouts. By the way, TAC, I can tell you, at TAC, our offices, our garage, where we park all our vehicles, the pipes in there for the sprinkler system, they burst, they burst. And all that water was going down to our parking garage, and it went down to the basement level where we have a sump pump to remove the water out of the garage. Well, the sump pump couldn't, couldn't keep up with the deluge of water. We ended up having four feet of water, four feet of water in the TAC garage. And as it was going up that TAC garage, it was approaching our electricity vault we have there in the corner of the garage, it's two feet away from that vault. And had it got to that vault, we would have been in a world of trouble, because it would have done tremendous damage to our facility. So, you know, we were real lucky that our maintenance folks got involved. Once they found that broken water pipe, they knew exactly where to shut it off and helped prevent a lot of damage to the facility. So maintenance people play a very important role. When you have a crisis, you know, they need to know where to turn stuff off, and our guys came through and did a great job. All right, so let's talk about how to avoid hail damage, because this is another area where the TAC pool has had a lot of big losses. Number one, be prepared. You know, if you have a phone, get a weather app on there and keep track of weather, because once you know it's coming, you'll get those alerts, and then you can alert people here in the county. And they can make, you know, corrective actions so they can avoid some hail damage if you need to, get your vehicles out of the way. Next, pull over. If you're driving, you're traveling around the county, pull over, get shelter underneath a canopy at a gas station or other location, get under that canopy and seek some shelter. But sometimes you may not be able to do that. The best thing you can do, the best thing you can do, if you know hail is here or is approaching, get into some type of covered parking environment. Do we have any covered parking here in? Most of my smaller to mid-sized counties don't have covered parking. Some of my larger counties do, okay? But the smaller ones don't have it. So what do you do if you don't have covered parking? Well, some of them are able to put up these campies, carports, and that will give some protection, okay? Some of my road and bridge departments have actually built, have built this covered parking area to protect their vehicles and their equipment, which has been real good. This is, this is Wichita County. They built this covered parking for their road and bridge precincts. Again, covered parking. This is Bell County. Bell County has 80 people in the road and bridge department, 80. And they have lots and lots of equipment and vehicles, and they had these metal canopies built where they parked their vehicles, and it's, you know, protected all their equipment when they have a bad storm. Drive toward or away from it. If you have hail coming down, it's best to drive toward it because your windshield can resist, you know, better than the side windows, okay? So if you're, if you have, if you're in a hail event, either drive toward it, okay, or away from it. Because your side windows, the windows on the side of your vehicle aren't as strong to withstand direct hits from hail, but your front windshield is much stronger to resist hail and small rocks from the road. Move your vehicle close to a building and try to shelter it if possible. If you know a storm is coming from the north, park your vehicle on the south side of the building as close as you can, because the building can probably give your vehicle some protection against some of that severe rain, hail, and whatnot. So park your vehicle close to the opposite end of the storm. Avoid tree branches and bushes. You know, some of our courthouses have large tree branches around them, pecan trees, oak trees, and these trees have large limbs. Try not to park underneath them if you know a storm's coming, you know? Get your vehicle out of the way. And then finally, if your county does not have auto physical damage, this is something you need to think about getting if your county doesn't already have that, to protect your new vehicles, particularly if you have an expensive one that you recently purchased, you have a lot invested into it. Get that auto physical damage. We have it available for TAC, it's relatively, you know, inexpensive, so it's a good way to protect your most valuable assets. Okay, how do I know if I had hail? Well, obviously, you'll have some dings on the hood. Look at the windshields, look at the glass, you'll obviously notice, notice some broken glass. Dings on the roof, again. Severe damage, you may have total, a total loss, okay? And it happens, it doesn't happen that often, but it does happen, and it can be very costly. So here is different hail sizes and their classification. Like I mentioned to you earlier, if it's one-inch size or larger, the size of a quarter, this is considered, considered severe. So anything that's ping pong ball on up, I mean, this is gonna do a lot of damage, this will do serious, serious damage to your buildings. P-size, marble size, this is the most common size hail. It's relatively small, doesn't usually do much damage, okay? But anything larger than one-inch size or larger is gonna be pretty severe. The larger it is, the more rare it is, it's not very common. Now, one of the things that we have done, TAC will do, if we know hail has been through this area, we will call you, we will tell you. And like last year, I made lots of phone calls to counties, letting them know, hey, I need you to check your buildings, Judge, because we have reports of hail over there by the Ollie Lander Center. Or wherever, wherever it was reported to us, we will contact the county and let you know, and we'll advise you to go out there and check your building, look for that damage, let us know. I know last year, before we had Winter Storm Yuri, Ernest and I were both calling counties to let them know, a storm is coming your way, it's gonna be a severe storm, we recommend that you check your buildings, make sure you have the heat turned on. Because what happens is oftentimes, the county will turn off the heat in some of their buildings to save money during the summer months, okay? And then when the winter rolls around, sometimes they forget to turn that heat on, and then we get broken pipes and a big mess. So I called a bunch of counties to, you know, remind them, check your buildings, make sure they're warm, make sure that there's good heating going in there, a winter storm is coming. And hopefully, it prevented some, you know, broken pipes in our buildings. Okay, so after you've had a serious storm or weather event, one thing we do recommend is contact your facility maintenance guys. Who do we have, Judge? Who's our facility maintenance person?
Fixing to be Jesse.
Jesse, okay. That's another one of his hats, right?
Yes, sir.
Facility maintenance, okay? Because what's gonna happen is, when we have a severe weather event, we do recommend that you contact your, you know, maintenance folks, have them check the buildings, do a walk-around. If possible, even check the roofs, if possible.
We also, our commissioners help us do that. Kenny and Jimmy and them, they get out and do that.
Good. It's better to be proactive and find out about that damage before it gets worse, because sometimes if, when we don't check our buildings, we have these water leaks on our roof, and what was a small problem, over time, will develop into a bigger problem, will have, you know, all kinds of water intrusion, damage to ceilings, damage to the walls, and then it eventually turns into mold, so it can be very, very costly. So that's why you need to be proactive and check your buildings before and after a serious weather event. So what does hail damage look like? Well, you'll see dipples on the roof. If you have a metal roof, it'll have a little ping on it, kind of looks like that. Another way you can identify it is get some chalk and use some chalk and, you know, smear it across the surface of that metal roof. And you can see where the hail hit, right there. See right there? Right there? And it shows you exactly the spot and the size of the hail. So you get an idea, that was a pretty big chunk of hail right there, and so was that one. Pretty good size. Now, on a metal roof, this is mostly cosmetic damage, okay? It's not gonna impair the structural integrity, it's gonna still keep the building watertight, but this is gonna do damage over time to other parts of your building that may not be metal. You may have some other surfaces that aren't metal, so. Look at your roof vents. Jesse, if you see a bunch of dings like this, that's an indication you might have some hail damage. In fact, I'm gonna give you a checklist I put together to help you identify hail damage. Now, there are not many insurance companies that provide you a checklist so you can actually identify hail damage and turn in a claim. Who does that?
Turns in the claims?
No. Who gives you information to identify hail damage to your building? There's not many insurance companies that do that. They try to do is, they don't want you to be educated and informed, they don't want you to be knowledgeable of hail damage. So I put together this checklist to make it real easy. So I'm gonna give this to y'all to help you as you look at your buildings after a storm event and identify potential damage such as hail. But you can look at some of your vents on top of your roofs, if you see these pings on there, that's a good indication, hey, our roof has been hit. Damage for broken skylights are another indication that you've had some hail. And then also, look at your air conditioning. And then also look at your air conditioning units. If you look on the sides here, you can see all these little pings. See all those little marks right there? All those little pings are hail hits, okay? So that's a dead giveaway that your roof has been struck by hail. And then finally, I don't think y'all have any solar panels, but maybe some of your homes might have solar panels. But if your solar panels are hit like this, you want to just basically turn off the inverter. Don't try to do any repairs or maintenance to it. Just turn it off and call a licensed solar technician to repair them. Because you could be subject yourself to electricity shock, you know? So you don't want to miss one. All right. So it's time to give out a door prize. I see y'all are getting a little bit tired here. So what we're going to do here, Ida, do you want to come up here? I want you to pick a number. And then, okay, what number do you have? Number three. On the sign-in sheet, who is number three?
Ida, who is three?
Rigged, rigged, rigged. So Ida, take a prize here.
I should get one of these.
Okay, chilling town. Wait, wait, don't leave. We still got people prize. Grab another number for us.
Number seven.
Number seven.
Jimmy?
Jimmy! Come here and pick a prize.
Wait a minute, is that Jim or Joe?
It's Jim.
Jim, Tom, Long Jim.
Oh! Jim, come up here and grab a prize. Gloves, shirt?
Can you have me the gloves?
Oh, the gloves. Those are nice.
What's a long, big eagle?
Try mine.
That works sometimes.
You got another one?
I remember seeing one where it was gloves.
Six.
Number six.
Because when the work ends, he's either got to go.
That's David Bull.
David.
Nah, let somebody else pick.
Oh, come on, Judge!
Nah, go ahead.
Oh, shirt, bro. Let me up here.
Let me have the coolant deal then.
Oh, there you go. There you go. Let's do one more.
One more, okay. Number two.
David Cockery.
David Cockery, the shirt.
Give me a first take.
Yeah, I've seen enough of these chickens.
One more.
One more.
Hey. Number nine.
Number nine.
There is no number nine.
Number six.
You already did six, because I'm the judge.
Seven.
You said six and nine.
Six and nine?
We don't have an eight, nine, ten, whatever. It's all seven.
That's a nine. But there's no nine.
Oh, they didn't make it, they didn't make it. They missed. Number nine didn't show up.
You should have said Harold King. Number five.
Harold King.
Oh! Rigged, rigged, rigged.
Just because I'm the one over here rigging them.
What do you want, Harold, sunglasses shirt or first take kid?
I think I want a little more for daughter.
All right, very good, very good, all right.
I'll give Mr. Shane.
Thank you. All right. So this is a composition shingle. And when hail strikes a composition shingle, what it does is knocks off some of these granules. You'll see that black surface underneath it, okay? So that's an indication of a hail hit. Here's another close-up picture. Another way you can tell is you rub your hand on the surface of the shingle. And it's going to feel like a bruised apple. It'll have a little kind of soft spot. You can do it with your hand. And that little indentation is an indication of hail striking, okay? The other thing you can do too is look in your gutters. Your gutters have a lot of these granules inside the gutter, you know? Your roof could have been struck by a lot of hail. It knocks it loose, it knocks it loose. Okay, if you have a modified Benjamin roof, do we have any roofs that are flat like this, that are just, okay? Does it look like this, have these like three foot wide, you know, stripes of modified Benjamin?
A lot of it is modified Benjamin, a lot of it is foam.
Yeah, okay.
I know we have them, Jack, but I haven't been up there.
Okay.
The guys just tell me.
You know, these roofs, the thing you want to know about them is you can look and just, it's kind of like the composition shingle. When the hail hits it, it's going to knock, you know, stuff loose. If you see a lot of loose debris, like, you know, a bunch of it, it's an indication of hail.
Do you have to have the same number for square asphalt?
Pardon me?
You have to have the same number of hits to what you do on asphalt.
Same number of hits?
Yeah.
How do you know that?
To know for...
Yeah. What he's talking about is, you know, how do you determine whether, you know? Yeah, they do a grid, it's a 10 by 10 grid. Usually if you have eight strikes in that grid. Yeah, eight or 10, okay? Okay, so, and some of our roofs are done in, what they call TPO roofs. The white ones, you see the white roof, it's all white? It's kind of like, it has plastic up there, that's called a TPO roof. Thermal plastic roof. It's like a 60 mil piece of plastic. When hail hits a TPO roof, it makes these crows be, or concentric circle like this. That's an indication that a roof's been hit by hail, okay? The important thing you need to know about that is if you have this type of roof, this is what we have at TAC. And we have a 20-year warranty on our roof at TAC, 20-year warranty. We have a bunch of these concentric circles up there. We have our roofing company come out every single year and do an inspection at no cost because it's under warranty. And they've had to repair our roof on three or four occasions where we've had a bunch of these little hits on our roof, okay?
Can they repair that TPO or do they have to replace it?
They can't repair. What they do is they'll put another piece over the top of it. And then they reheat and glue the seams down. Yeah, once this surface, the integrity of it has been compromised, yeah, you can't glue it or, you know, you have to completely cover it with a new piece of TPO. And they'll glue it down or use a heat gun and they'll stay, you know, adhere it to the roof surface. But they've redone our roof three or four times, okay? This is a 20-year warranty roof. I think we're on here like 15 now. So we're getting towards the end of our warranty. So we haven't paid one time to repair our roof at TAC.
They warranty it even against hail?
Yeah, yeah, that's a covered peril. It's warranty, it's a 20-year warranty. Now, most of these roof warranties, like for TPO, are 15 or 20 years, depending on, you know, the type of roof you got. Ours is a 20-year warranty because we want a longer warranty. And so one of the things that's required by TAC is we also have to have them come out and do an annual inspection. That is required in order to keep your warranty. You have to have the roofing company do an annual inspection of that roof, okay? And they will look at it and if they see any damage, they want to fix it now before it starts damaging the interior of the building. So if they want to be proactive too, they would much rather fix a damaged roof before it starts doing damage inside, because then you're talking about big money, okay? So same thing for y'all. Know your warranties, okay? Get familiar with them. If they require an annual inspection to keep that warranty, you know, valid, make sure you get your inspections done, okay? We do that every year at TAC, every year. All right. Here's kind of a better picture of a hail hit on a TPO roof. See all the circles right there? It's a dead giveaway. But another way you can get circles like this damaged to your roof, if you have maintenance people going up there doing work on your roof, working on the AC unit, they drop a hammer, okay? I was up on our roof inspecting it one time and and there was like a 15-foot ladder up there. I go, what's this ladder doing up here? Oh, Jack, we had some maintenance people doing some work up here and they left that ladder. And then you can't leave it there, the wind's going to blow it around, it'll tear up the roof. It'll tear up the membrane.
They lay bolts and screws, everything else up there.
Yeah, you got to go up there and check, make sure they don't leave any tools, bolts, screws. Because you step on those bolts and screws, what's it going to do? It's going to puncture that roof. So you really need to check your contractors when they go up there. Check them after they leave, make sure they didn't leave anything up there. Make sure they don't smoke either. Yeah, they'll go up there, oh man, smoke time. They will. So make sure they don't smoke up there. That's why when we have people come to work at TAC, our maintenance guys, they go up there with them. And they take them to wherever they're doing their work. And then they go back and they check on them before they leave, you know? Of course, I didn't catch the ladder last time, but, you know, they should have caught that ladder, like, hey, how come you guys didn't catch that? Well, they were in a hurry and it was late in the day and get that thing out of here. Okay. So here's what a damaged shingle looks like. A hail will hit the shingle and knocks loose the granules. See it tears down here? And then there you go, you leak. So just real quick, when you have a severe storm, some indicators at the ground level are blown off shingles, then it vents, splatter on your metal surfaces, broken or fallen tree limbs. These are all indications that you possibly have hail around your buildings. On the exterior, look on the outside of your buildings, look at the gutters, the downspouts. Are there any damage to the downspouts? Do you have any cracked or broken glass? Shredded plants, flowers, that sort of thing. This is the indicator of hail damage on the exterior of your buildings. Finally, indicators on the roof. If you go up on the roof, you know, make sure that you do it safely. If you have deadened roof vents, metal flashings that are damaged, missing shingles, these are all indications of hail damage. Now, there are some things you could do to protect your buildings. If you've had them damaged, you can purchase impact-resistant roofing. That means a metal roofing. Metal roofing's going to cost a little bit more, but it's impact-resistant. It'll last a long time and it holds up better to hail, okay? So metal roofing is impact-resistant. It's not hail-proof, but they call it impact-resistant. Tiles are also another impact-resistant roofing material, okay? Those are real good too. They are more expensive. And then finally, asphalt shingles, but they must be Class IV rated. Class IV impact shingles, okay? One, two, and three class, those are lower grade and they're not going to hold up as well. All right. What we recommend is that you check your roofs a minimum of twice a year. Spring and fall, minimum. Check them twice a year, see if there's any damage. And after any type of major weather event, wind, rain or hail. And then finally, be familiar with the elements of your roofing warranty on your buildings. Follow your roofing warranty, make sure you get them inspected as needed. Because otherwise, the manufacturer's not going to stand behind your roof, okay? So make sure you understand the terms and conditions, limitations of your roofing warranty and, okay? Okay, finally, we're just about done here and I'm just ready to wrap it up. Some tips. If you have to choose a roofing contractor, the one you want to be wary of is somebody who comes in right after a storm event. You'll have these guys that travel and follow storms. And when they come in, they're going to come knocking at your door and they're going to come see the judge. And they're going to say, Judge, we understand you just had a hail storm here in the county. We're going to do a free inspection of all your buildings. Would you let us do that, okay? And then they're going to say, we can also, you know, get that fixed for you at a low, 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 low price. And then they're going to be out of town. They'll be gone because they followed the storms, okay? So we want you to be cautious of roofing contractors that show up following a storm event, okay? Because those guys come and go. And if they do a job for you, when you need warranty work, they're gone. They're at another town or they're not local. So just be wary of that. Also, you want to make sure the people who do your roof work, they have full insurance, workers comp, all that stuff. You want to make sure they're fully insured. Also, who is doing the installation? If a company comes in and tells you they want to replace your roof, ask them, are they going to install it or are they going to hire a subcontractor? Because that's what a lot of companies do. They do a bait and switch. They tell you they're going to come and do a, you know, low-price job for you. You're going to love it. And then they hire some of these subcontractors that aren't real good, okay? So just be aware of that. And then finally, is the roofing contractor an authorized installer? That's really important, okay? Because if he is, if he's an authorized installer, then they'll stand behind the warranty. If he's a subcontractor, they come and go, they're probably not going to be. And then look at their paperwork. If they're local, if they're a reputable company and they're local, look at some of their work. All right, finally, last couple slides and we're finished. If you do have a damaged roof or a piece of property, it's easy to file a claim. You can go to the TAC website and type in "file a claim." And you can either file a claim online or you can file a hard copy. How do we file claims here right now?
Both.
Okay, are we doing hard line? I'm sorry, hard copy and online?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. It's easy to do. And then finally, just wrapping things up, just to kind of give you an idea, this is why we're talking about this today, because 2020, we had more than $1.2 million in hail damage to vehicles, okay? So it's spiking up and we're trying to share some information with our members, let them know, you know, we've had some serious losses this last year. In addition to that, this is our buildings, county buildings. Our losses this last year, 18.5 million, okay? So we do want to let you know about that, we want to be proactive. How can we prevent some of these high losses on the property side? Install hail-resistant roofing, metal, tile or Class IV roofing, okay? That's how you can better protect your buildings. How can we better protect our vehicles? Some type of covered parking would be good, okay? But let's say we don't have covered parking. What can we do then? Park our vehicles inside our precinct barns, okay? If we have any type of like Colosseum or Ollie Liner Center, if you had to put some vehicles out there to protect them from a major storm coming our way, you could possibly park them out there, Ollie Liner. So any type of environment where you can put your vehicles inside to protect them would be a good thing. And that's how you can better protect your assets. You may not have a covered parking area until you park your vehicles. And then finally, any questions? Any questions? I know there's a lot of information, so let's go ahead now. Can we give away the rest of this stuff? Ida, would you mind?
Sure.
Run, we have four more items.
My be me all the time.
Number eight.
Number eight.
There is no number.
They didn't make it.
Number one.
Molenda.
Molenda. I think I want that shirt. Give it.
That way you can find us wherever Yuri is. You can hide from me.
Too bad Father today's done.
Number 10, we probably don't have that.
We don't have a what?
A number 10?
Nope.
Number four.
Number four is Jimmy Kelly.
Jimmy Kelly. Shades.
What about these other three?
Oh, we don't have others.
Oh, good. Has anyone not won a prize? Jesse, have you won a prize yet?
Jesse hasn't.
Carla has.
Chris. You got one?
I'm Chris.
Why don't you give it to Carla?
I'll get some shades. I'll get some shades, thank you.
All producers should have...
Real quick, this is a binder, if you don't mind passing one of these. There's a copy of Jack's presentation inside the binder. The binder is a new document that was developed by the Claim Department. And it talks about filing a claim, the procedure for filing a claim, some of the questions that you may have. So, very good information there. Okay, so now we're going to talk about Hill County. And please bear with me. Okay, so this is Hill County, 2012. 2020, I have to wear my glasses. So what we did in 2020, our underwriting department, they came out with this table where basically they can benchmark a member against the entire state. The, the panhandle for us would be the panhandle area and then Hill County. So as you can see here, this is the pool, this is the region, this is the member. And this is a loss ratio. Loss ratio is basically what's being paid in contribution versus what's been incurred in losses. So there's some areas where Hill County is higher than others. So let's start with workers compensation. Workers compensa- automobile liability. Let's start with automobile liability. Uh, the pool, uh, average is 51%. The region is 37%. For us, it's 202%. So what does that say? It says that there's room for us to improve. That's what it tells me. So we need to work on that. You know? We need to work on that.
The numbers don't lie.
I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody.
Oh, you don't have to.
You, you know the times better than I do. But obviously, auto liability, this is what we hit somebody else, basically. So my experience, I've been, I've been with TAC since 1993 and I had the chance to review auto claims for many, many years. There's some, there's some claims that, in my opinion, this is my personal opinion, it's not representative of TAC. This is my personal opinion. There's going to be some claims where, where I've seen, sometimes you, there was nothing you could do. I've seen this claim over and over and over where our vehicle is going through an intersection on a green light and all of a sudden somebody just run a red light and T bones our vehicle. It happens. It happens more often than we can imagine. To me, people would say, well, they should have been scanning the intersection. Well, yes, you're right. But sometimes you scan the intersection, you don't see anything. Maybe there was a blind spot, maybe there was a bus, maybe it was, there was a train or something like that. Because we have a fatality involving a train where the equipment operator didn't see the train coming because there was another train in between. And, uh, so we have, it, it happens. But having said that, when we look at the losses, there's a lot of vehicle accidents that can be prevented. And the same thing, the same comment I made yesterday afternoon in Land County. How many of you remember the very first time you got behind the wheel of a vehicle? How many of you remember that day? When they said, here, let's try this. How did you grab the steering wheel?
Two hands.
Two hands?
Yeah.
Ten and two. Wide knuckles. Why is that? What, what did we do then?
Scared.
That's it. We were scared. So that's the reason we, we gripped that steering wheel like that. But what happens as you started driving more and more? What happened to that grip?
You got one.
You got relaxed. Then over time, you know, you go for one hand, right? And before you know it, you're driving and texting on your knee. Why do we do that? I mean, I've seen it. Why do we do that?
We've lost that fear.
We lost that fear. We get complacent. That's it. So we're humans. That happens on a lot of things. We drop the guard. So what is the purpose of safety training? Is to bring that to the front. How many of you have taken defensive driving in the past and you walked out of that defensive driving class? Yes, we, we probably complained because we wasted a Saturday in there. But you get out of that parking lot and you're looking both ways, you're driving with both hands. Because that, that, we were just reminded as to what can go wrong. And that's the whole idea about safety training. Is reminding you as to what can go wrong. I used to teach a, a training on heavy equipment safety. And I always started my presentation by telling them, I said, look, I'm not a heavy equipment operator. I said, but I know how you're going to get killed on a heavy equipment because I read your reports. When they come across my front desk, my, my desk, by that time it's too late. You're already dead. And I compile a lot of information and, and I, I did my safety training. And the whole idea was to raise awareness, how people get killed in the workplace. Because if they're able to go home at the end of the day, I did my job. So there's room for us to work on automobile liability. You guys know what department is, is contributing to this? Okay? There's resources that we have that we want to talk to you about, that we may be able to help you. We can offer a resource, but we cannot force you to take it. Okay? Let's look at public officials liability. As a pool, 106%. The area, 125%. The member, 368%. Public officials liability.
Name that, in that automobile.
I'm sorry. Auto physical damage. I apologize. Where are my glasses? Auto physical damage.
I wouldn't decide that public official were liable.
No, public officials are doing really good. Auto physical damage, 368%. This is where we, uh, incur losses related to hail damage. They have, uh, where people hit our vehicles, where uninsured vehicles hit our vehicles and things of that nature. Like Jack indicated, we have been hit tremendously by hail this year. I mean, 2020 selling 2021, take a seat, hold my beer, because 2020, 21 has been crazy. It's so unpredictable. The, the amount of losses that we have seen related to hail is crazy. Medina County, which is Hondo, Texas, six inch hail. Six inch hail. I mean, you can kill somebody. So anyway, so yes, auto physical damage, i- it's another area that we could probably need some help. General liability, 26% for the pool, 12% for the area, 0% for Hill County. You guys are doing great. This is where we see people filing claims because they come into your facilities and they get injured as a result of maybe a unsafe condition, a tripping hazard and things of that nature. Water spill in the ground or anything like that. You guys are doing great. Law enforcement liability, 52% for the, for the pool, 55% for the area. Right now you're sitting at 30.5%. For, for Hill County. Okay? Property, 91% for the pool, 42% for the area, 46% for, for Hill County. Just, just shy above the area. The panhandle has been hit hard with hail and then the winter storm. And public official liability, 368%. No, just kidding. 40% for the state, 39% for the area, and you guys are doing great, 47, 45%. And then workers compensation, 69%, 69% for the, for the state, 53% for the area. Right now we're sitting at 87%. Okay, so there's some room to, to, to work on that. And that is something that we're going to be talking to you on workers compensation. You're in a few minutes. So again, I, um, I showed this similar graph in Land County yesterday and, um, some of the folks were cut off guard. And I tell you what I told them. This is just a quick picture as to where we are. And that's the reason we're here because we want you to know that we want to work with you to work on those numbers that, that have room to improve. And I think there's opportunities for us to collaborate so we can improve on those numbers. Any questions on this? Okay, workers compensation, real quick. Target modifier, target modifier is one of those factors that determine your final contribution for workers compensation. When you're sitting at one, it's neutral. Anytime you go above one, you're being surcharged because of your experience, so on and so forth. Right now we're sitting at 1.01. Just one hair above neutral. Okay? And then Jack has a pass for you that is going to help us with that. One of the benefits by being with the pool is that you get some additional discounts for every line of coverage that you participate. Thank you to the board members. Um, Ida is a board member of the risk management pool. They approved, uh, to increase the discount from 2% for line of coverage to 4% for line of coverage. That represents 16,259, uh, $259 on discounts of your workers compensation. There's some room for improvement here. If we sign up to participate in the alliance, there's an, also a 4% discount that we can get of your workers compensation. All you have to do is send us an email, let us know that you want to participate. And we talked to Helena, so we can take care of that. So it's something to, to consider. Uh, right now, uh, we provide workers compensation, we provide what the law says. We don't set the limit. We pay what the law tells us that we have to pay. Uh, elected officials, they're not employees. They're elected officials. So the only way we're going to be able to provide, uh, workers compensation to elected officials is to a separate endorsement. You do have that endorsement, so you elected officials have this available to you. You're also providing, um, workers compensation for your volunteer law enforcement. You totally agree with that. Currently right now, you're not providing workers compensation to election, election workers or jurors. And that is an option that you guys have. Okay? Jack, you have a discussion here? The top 10 occupation?
Yes. Okay. So, um, you can see, this is, this is, uh, where we've had a lot of claims is on the law enforcement side. Um, we've had 27 claims and, and obviously the law enforcement, they deal with some of the most bad people in our society. Uh, it's a high risk occupation, um, particularly our jailers, you know, because they, they're dealing with people that are drunk, on drugs, or crazy. So, uh, they deal with some of the worst people in society, so, uh, their job is very, very difficult. Another high hazard occupation is road and bridge, working around heavy equipment and also in the work zones where cars are traveling at high rates of speed. They put our, our people at risk. So, um, what we have here is 27 claims, uh, on the law enforcement side with total losses of 57,000. The average claim in the TAC pool is $3,000. $3,000 is the average claim in the TAC pool. So what's 3,000 times 27? So we're a little bit, we're a little bit better than average. Our claims are not as severe as the average claim with the TAC pool. So there you go, there's an addendum. There's an addendum.
Keep in mind that law enforcement operations are 24/7 too.
Yeah, they're a 24/7 operation and high hazard, they're dealing with a lot of bad people. Okay? Look on the road and bridge side. What's 12 times 3?
36,000.
36,000. How many, how much do we have in losses? 17. So we're doing real good road and bridge. I want to give an adaway shout out to my, my friends in road and bridge that keep up the good work. On the clerical side, this is a low, low hazard occupation. People are working in the office environment. It's not that dangerous. Uh, you can see we've had seven claims, 1,700 losses. That's great. Keep up the good work. That's an adaway. Keep up the good work. Our juvenile, uh, office, there's a lot of, uh, probation officers who are injured from time to time by these, you know, unhappy, unruly, you know, uh, people in their detention facilities. And usually I see a lot more injuries in the probation department. They get banged up from time to time. Um, but we only have one claim and a very, very minor loss. So keep up the good work there. And then we have one more small claim there. So there's your total. And, and bear in mind, this is for a four-year period, 2018 to the present. Okay? So that, that will give you a snapshot of what's been going on.
Thank you. There's one more to have to read. Okay.
All right. So Iris was talking about the alliance network and whatnot, and there's some advantages. We can take, uh, sign up for that and take advantage of some discounts. But in addition to that, some of the things we can do to help the county, we can offer the county training. Okay? We can come out and do onsite training, kind of like we're doing today. That's probably one of our most popular ways of providing service to the county is doing an onsite training. However, during this period of COVID last year, when people were not able to mingle and do training, we started, uh, adapting to the needs of COVID and we started doing a lot of virtual training. Okay? And we're willing to do that. If you want to, want us to do some virtual training, we're willing to do that. That's, that's in our wheelhouse. We can do that. Um, in addition to virtual training, another form of training that we offer is online training. We have, uh, some resources that we can offer you with many different safety topics and do online training where your guys can, and your employees can get training right there at their desk. And we, we have, uh, entered into an agreement with a company that will stream this information straight to your computers and you can do training. Okay? You will need to have an email address for us because we'll send the links to the employees and we can sign them up for online training. There is no cost of that service. It's a free service and, um, I highly recommend you take advantage of that. Okay? You can print out a certificate when you finish the class. Most of our online courses are anywhere from 20 minutes long to 60 minutes long. So they're not going to take all day. You guys can get some good information, some good training, print out a certificate. Okay? Very good service, very, and it's free. Uh, in addition to that, we also conduct risk management surveys. That's one of the, uh, things that we do is we go out and we look at buildings and locations to identify any hazard or unsafe condition. And sometimes we can alert you to a problem you never knew existed. And we'll, we'll find things that, you know, oh, I never knew we had that problem, Jack. And so, um, we do safety surveys of the buildings. Claims analysis. I did that with Ida earlier this year and her deputies. Uh, I got on the phone and we went over all the claims that the county's had in the last, uh, since 2018. I went over line by line. We looked at it. And so, uh, she gets some good information there of what departments are having losses, what types of losses, what type of injuries were happening. Uh, technical assistance, anytime the county needs help, you give us a call. We're, we're happy to do some research for you. If there's any issue that's a concern, whether it be safety, human resources, or law enforcement, we provide technical assistance to the county and we'll research whatever topic you need help with. Finally, the safety equipment program. Uh, y'all are doing great because you know what? The sheriff, I don't know if, I haven't checked how much they've spent in your department. But for the safety equipment program, a total of $1,989.80 is available to the sheriff. The same amount is available for road and bridge, $1,989. And I'm proud to report that Ida's done a good job of ordering some safety equipment. She has already ordered $1,650 for road and bridge. So you have about $338 left in the balance. So I want to encourage you to try to spend that $338 if you can.
Okay.
Okay? Gatorade, gloves, cones, uh, first aid kits, signs, uh, now those are always popular items. Uh, but yeah, spend your, your money. And Sheriff, uh, have you had a chance to go up to the?
The commissioners are going like, okay, I, I went to the judge and he ordered.
Okay.
I placed the order, but he's the one that told me what to do. Cause they're like going, what? We don't know anything about it.
Yeah.
But they don't because he get, judge orders first and then we go to the commissioners. And he recommended to me that we offer it to precinct two since he's new. Okay? Kenny's like, yeah, whatever. So just so you know.
Our should be spent.
Uh, you should be. Have y'all already spent it then?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't know. I didn't check the, the, the law.
She gets it down to like two or three cents.
Oh, yeah. Well, good. Good.
And that's kind of what we did last year on, on our deal. But, um, so guys, if any of the prices that y'all saw, if you need anything like the hats, the shirts, these, let me know. Unless y'all want, we got $300.
We need some more of these safety glasses.
Okay.
They're all with them. Cooling deals.
Okay.
And green shirts.
Uh, okay, I'm good.
Green shirts. Okay. All right. Green shirts, glasses, and the rags for the cooling rags, okay? Hats. Hats, huh?
Probably hats.
Okay.
I wouldn't be a loss if I always wore a hat and you know, it's shining like a.
We'll do, we'll do that.
I want to give a big shout out to Ida for supporting that program. This, this year we have given out to counties $800,000 towards the purchase of the safety equipment for county workers. And it's because of our gracious board, we're able to provide this service to counties who they believe in what we're trying to do to support safety and prevent accidents and injuries in the workplace. It's because of their generosity, this is, I think, the third, third year?
2014.
That we, yeah, since 2014, we've been doing it a number of years. And it's a huge investment. And it's a huge investment. And it's because of our board that we're able to offer this to our counties. Thank you very much for your support. Thank you very much.
There's a lot of other members too.
Thank you, thank you. And finally, I just want to mention the safety award program. Right here on the wall, if you look right here to the right, Hale County has earned six safety awards.
Seven.
Seven, okay? The last one we earned was in 2002. We are going to change that trend and our goal and our objective this year is to bring Hale County another safety award and put it up on the wall. Because we're going to renew our trend of getting and earning a safety award in Hale County. Now, we've talked, Ida's talked to me about this and I'm anxious and looking forward to working with you, putting together a safety committee. I'm fired up and ready. And that's one of the goals that I have for 2021 is to help you earn another safety award. I look forward to working with Jesse and the rest of the safety committee members, getting the program started and getting y'all another safety award on the wall. That's my, my goal and objective, so I'm looking forward to doing that.
My wish list will be that maybe we can call back next week and schedule a safety committee meeting.
There you go, Jack.
So let's hit the ball rolling on that. Let's go over here. Okay, so now we're going to talk about public officials liability. There's been a few changes for good on public official liability. We do have a deductible of $10,000 per claim on public official liability. We are currently providing coverage for you district judge and district attorney. We also, under public officials liability, this is where we cover our version of cybersecurity. As you all know, cyber threats is, is a new emerging threat against cities and counties and school districts. They're finding out that our systems, systems are not up to speed. So what I think that happened this year, we made some changes to the coverage document to include additional benefits for you, and I'm going to cover those in a minute. So, very important. We had hired a cybersecurity consultant. Unfortunately, he decided to pursue other options, so we're going to be looking into replacing that person because this is an area that it is very important for us because this is not going to go away anytime soon. If anything, it's going to continue to get worse. So under public officials liability, Diana, do you want to discuss some of the services that we offer?
So we, we do, and it will be Rita going forward in the future. You probably have worked a lot with Michelle in the past, but what your HR consultants, what we do, and we did this this morning with Ida, is we start with what we call an HR assessment with you. And what we're looking at is looking at what risks you may have and how can we help mitigate? You have very low PO claims, right? That one was awesome. I mean, talk about an attaboy, that's wonderful. But you're one bad supervisor or one disgruntled employee away from what? A large, potential large lawsuit under PO. So what we do is look at how can we help mitigate that by being proactive? So one thing we're going to do, where Rita's going to take your all's policy manual. It's from 2016, we reviewed policy manuals, manuals, and we're going to take yours and do an overview. In the last, just last year, there were some very significant Supreme Court case rulings and your, you know, policy manual is not up to date. So if you've got a lawsuit, then what might happen to you? That policy manual might be used against you in a court of law because we weren't proactive in updating our policy manual on some of the significant federal laws and Supreme Court cases. So that's what we help you do. We have a sample that we provide for you and so that it's easy for you to update when we find problems. You can copy and paste some of the language in. Our policy review samples all go through a legal review with TAC Legal. So you can feel real confident, and when I tell Ida, you know, you need to update your harassment policy and your EEO, she can be, feel real confident if I tell her that, to go to our sample we'll provide her. She can copy and paste it, put Hale County in, put it in, and you all can feel confident in passing that that policy's been through a legal review and that that's going to be protective and help you all. Other things that we do is we come in and do HR compliance training, so we try to be proactive. If you have a claim, it's too late to call Rita or Ida, right? Because we're already over in claims and there's a lawsuit. So we want to be proactive with you and offer you training and to help mitigate the possibility. So we decided that this year we'll, we'll, we're going to provide hiring and firing and documentation training to all your supervisors. And then that'll help you for the future and, and help you be able to have some good processes and policies in place to mitigate any claims. So those are the, some of the things we do. We're always available by phone, we do technical assistance. And so Rita said day and night, and believe me, I've had, I've had county judges, commissioners call me day and night as well. The caller, before you take the action, that would be our preference. You've got a problem employee, you need some help, you can pick up the phone, call Rita, and she could walk you through maybe the proper processes and steps to help mitigate a bad claim. And if we do get a claim, it'll be that, you know, the findings will be for you because you'll follow some proper processes in HR. And we can't stop all lawsuits, but we can reduce the cost of those lawsuits for you if, if you're getting help. So that's what HR does and we're happy to help you. And we look at anything from payroll issues to training issues for you and we answer all type, any type of HR or workers' comp. We can also help you with workers' comp issues as well. We also can help with unemployment issues and we would like to be again proactive there where you're calling us prior to firing someone. If you've already done it, then all we can do is tell you hopefully maybe how to get out what you did. But we're not going to be as successful as before you do that termination. You call and get some assistance from us, okay? When we're here, Rita will be your new person and we're very happy to assist you in any way.
Well, my first experience with the sheriff was when Michelle came down and did some HR training for your staff. And that's definitely one thing that we highly encourage our members get to know. The HR consultants build that relationship because really, when it comes to public officials liability and law enforcement liability, in my opinion, those can be, anybody can allege anything. And we're going to defend you. That's what we hear from you. But literally, anybody can allege anything against you and we have to listen and we have to defend you. So if you have, if you have an incident that took place, let us know as soon as possible so we can, so we can help you as soon as possible. When it comes to public officials liability and law enforcement liability, your first line of defense is going to be what? Your policies. That's going to be your first line of defense, is your policy, because that's what they're going to always allege, that you don't have a policy. Then they're going to allege you haven't provided training. Then they're going to allege, well, there's, there's practice that doesn't reflect the training. That's why it's important that your policies, your training, your practice out there in the field are reflective as to what is that you want. And that applies to PO and LE. So this is why we spend a lot of time in making sure that we provide this policy service under public officials liability, because that gives us the better chance to defend you. There's a, there's an attorney in East Texas, Robert Davis, you know him very well. And first time I met Robert Davis, and he was talking to a group of new detention officers at JAMO in Huntsville, and he said, look, learn your policies, understand your policies, complete the training. I said, but whatever you do, don't lie. He said, I can defend you about everything, but I cannot defend a lie. You know, but policies are going to be important. And he was hammering the detention officer, learn your policies of your department. So policy is very important for us. So this is on the public officials liability. Then we're going to move on to, oh, what, some of the changes that we made? Again, the board gave us some additional funds to cover the cybersecurity. Electronic equipment, electronic data, network interruption calls were not included in the previous public officials liability. Ida, what does your PO renew? We called them up.
We're on a calendar here.
Yes, but where, where is the renewal date? Let me check real quick here.
We just did all the applications and everything.
Liability, they renewed January of this year. So, so these benefits were added to Hale County beginning of this year. So the board approved $100,000 to cover electronic equipment, electronic data, network interruption. They also gave us $10,000 per claim with a $10,000 aggregate on extortion monies. That, that is something that was not available to us prior. Now, you may say, well, $10,000, is that a whole lot? That's what they approved, we took it because we didn't have anything before. So what are we, what are we looking for in the future? Again, cyber threats are going to continue to be an issue for governmental entities and school districts. So what TAC R and P would like to do is to develop a cybersecurity policy, a standalone cybersecurity policy that will be more robust from what we currently have. Now, the service that we have is the eRisk Hub. This is a portal where you can go in and download white papers on cybersecurity training and things of that nature. There's a lot of resources available, no calls to you. If they need access to that, let me know and we'll, we'll get you the credentials to get in there. But it's a service that is currently available to you already. Okay. Property coverage, this is where we cover your buildings. This is where we cover your mobile equipment. Again, right now, for all perils, you have a deductible of $1,000, which is unheard of, okay? Mobile equipment, you have a deductible of $2,500. One of the things that we do as part of the property coverage, you have a blanket policy. So one of the things that we have to do, we need to make sure that your values are accurate. So right now, for 2021, we're going to be redoing an appraisal on buildings in excess of $249,000. Anything below $249,000 is going to be trend. Basically, it's like what the appraisal district does, you know, they, they estimate the value of your properties. So we're going through that. Property coverage has been, has taken a pounding in 2021. The actuarial report for 2021 said that we were going to have about $30 million in losses in 2021. We exceeded that already. Unfortunately, we lost a historical courthouse due to vandalism in the Hill Country and the pool is working with that member to restore that historical courthouse. And we've been working with that member. And so again, this is where we cover your, your canine animals also. So we have a lot of, a lot of services that we offer, which includes the appraisal, appraisal service that we offer to you, the replacement costs for your properties. Some of your buildings have a historical value also that we, we provide. The disaster preparation recovery, there's some documentation, I can, I gave you the folder with, from the property claims, get some information as to what to do if you have a claim. Risk management surveys, Jack can help us with that too. Be on the lookout for conditions that can lead to a possible claim. The key word here is preventive maintenance, and Jack can help you with that too. We want to help counties develop a preventive maintenance for your buildings. We talked about roof preventive maintenance this morning. A lot of times, you have contractors going into your buildings to put antennas or air-conditioned units and they cut into your new roofs. You want to make sure that if they damage your roof, that they're held accountable. So whenever you have vendors in your, in your buildings, go take a look. Make sure that they don't leave some of the debris that you got to work identifying, debris, materials, tools. Because if you get a strong wind, and that is very possible in this area, all that flying material is going to destroy your roof. Also, if you have a hailstorm, make sure that your drains are not clogged because then the water's going to sit there and then it's going to come down into your buildings. So developing a preventive maintenance for your air-conditioned systems, for the different systems that you have in place. We had a, we have a claim in, in the books of a courthouse that flooded the basement in the first floor because the sump pumps outside the courthouse did not kicked in. And they got a lot of rain and those sump pumps were supposed to evacuate the water and all went into the basement into the first floor. So you have to trigger those sump pumps on a regular basis just to make sure because that contact, that floater, sometimes gets stuck and it doesn't, actuates the pump when it's supposed to. So those are top, you know, some of the things that you need to do on your preventive maintenance. Air-condition, make sure that the condensation is, is going outside your buildings. Otherwise, you have additional humidity inside of the room. You know, your air-condition works very hard to remove humidity in the room. So the more humidity you have, the harder your air-condition is going to work. When it talks to hail damage, if you have units up in the roof, sometimes you can put a protective barrier just to make sure your coil don't get, don't get damaged. And if you have protective barriers and you get a hailstorm, you need to comb those fins on those, on those air-conditions to make sure that the air goes through and cool down the units. Otherwise, you're going to overwork the unit and it's going to fail prematurely. So that is part of the preventive maintenance that we're talking about. So anyway, another benefit that we have on the property coverage is that if you add or delete, but particularly if you add buildings or equipment midway to the renewal, they're not going to charge you extra right, right away. They're going to wait till the next renewal and that's when they'll update the information. So keep that in mind. Autofysical damage, right now you have a zero deductible on autofiscal damage. This is one of, one of the areas that we talked about that, that we probably need to be on the lookout. This is where we pay for your hail damage. This is where you pay for your stolen equipment. We have seen a rash of stolen equipment in county operations. Jack would tell you many times, remove the key from the dump trucks, from the mobile equipment, from your pickup trucks. We had belly dump stolen from counties along, what is that interstate, I have to say, 20? About 20? Yeah. Out, it, some of the counties in the vicinity of I-20, they have lost equipment, bobcats, belly dumps, and things of that nature. So we definitely always encourage you to have a, a policy to remove the keys. Don't make it as easy as possible to the bad people to come in and take your equipment. When you look at your schedule, my, my philosophy when it comes to your vehicle schedules as far as autofiscal damage, sometimes we'll say, well, anything above or older than five years, we only got to provide liability. And that is a decision that the county can make. That is a form of risk management, you're retaining some of the expenses. My question to you will be, if you have, let's say, a taco in the sheriff's department, that is a 2011 taco, that taco is probably worth at least $10,000 right now, even with high mileage. And then you add all the equipment. So let's say the taco is worth $13,000, $15,000. If you were to lose that vehicle in a hailstorm or somebody stole it or you totaled the vehicle or something, can you afford to replace that vehicle for the sheriff for $15,000? If the, if the answer is yes, no problem. But if the answer is no, then you may want to consider keeping those high-dollar vehicles with autofiscal damage. Belly dumps, dump trucks, those are expensive vehicles to replace newer, newer pickup trucks. So when you look at the schedule, pay attention to that. Again, retaining some of the risk is a perfect form, form of risk management and we respect that. But right now, you have a zero deductible for that. What can we do to help you? Classroom training, obviously, online training, Jack talked about that. We have some driving simulators, one for public works and one for law enforcement. The simulators were parked during COVID and they're just now coming back online. So there's a backlog as far as places where we need to go. But we're excited through the fact that we are able to get back on the road again. Again, not accountable for additions of new vehicles into the, into autofiscal damage and liability for that matter. Any questions on this? Okay, so when we look at autofiscal damage, where do we see the majority of the losses? Hitting animals, okay? So it's only one, what do you call it, $25,000?
Cow.
Was it a cow?
Yeah.
Okay, it's a cow. So it's better enough when you hit a deer. Right now, if you hit a deer, it's very easy for you to incur $5,000 in damages if you hit a deer. Right now if you hit a deer, it's very easy for you to incur $5,000 in damages if you hit a deer. If you hit a cow, you probably total the vehicle. So when you have a, a, a pickup truck, pickup trucks retain their value here in Texas. So you can buy a pickup truck with 100,000 miles and it's still going to cost you $15,000 easy, depending on what kind of pickup truck. But when you have a, an emergency vehicle, that you have sirens, you have computers, you have, you name it. Those vehicles are very expensive to replace. And when you hit a cow, you, you got to total the vehicle. So it is what it is. Another area, rear ending, those are things when we're, rear ending. Sometimes for some reason we cannot drive in reverse. You know, that's another problem that we have, we cannot drive in reverse. And that applies pretty much in front of the state of Texas. Failure to control speed, failure to yield the runaway. Again, to me, when, when I look at some of those claims, when you look at those claims, sometimes that's when you realize that there, there was some of those that could have been prevented. And what I think that we can do, and Jack can help us with this, we can do an accident investigation training. So that is something that we can add to, to the services that we have available for you. Struck by, by an object, the vehicle damaged during a storm, that is very low right now. So when I look at your automobile liability, you're doing really good as far as providing automobile liability and autofiscal damage to your vehicle, so no, no concerns on that.
Ernest, on the, not this slide, you just went from that, then the one before that. I just wanted to point out that that's from 18 to present.
Correct.
So that's really not that bad.
It's not that bad, no.
That's what I was going to point out.
No, no, it's 18 to present, yes. General liability, what can we do as far as that? We can help you be able to look at for unsafe conditions. Right now you have a zero deductible under your general liability. The beauty of a general liability is that we have tort limits. There's some protection for us. When it comes to public officials' liability and law enforcement, there's no tort limit protection. But on general liability, there is. Again, we do heavy equipment safety because a lot of the claims that we see in the GO across the state come from mowing operations where the mowers break windshields on traction light vehicles. So one of the things that we want to be on the lookout, when we do heavy equipment safety training, we want to make sure that the guards are in place, the chains need to be replaced sometimes. Those rubber that they have on the, on the chutes where the grass is coming out is worn out. So we help you identify some of those things. Law enforcement liability, we have a $10,000 deductible. This includes law enforcement liability for the attorney's office, council, employees in the district attorney's office, juvenile probation, and the sheriff's department. Carmen would have been doing this slide for you, but she's in Panama City, Florida. I just saw it on Facebook. She's represented out in Panama City, Florida. But some of the things that we do is the onsite technical consultations. We have a sample, a sample policy for both patrol and, and jail operations. Sheriff, do you know if you guys are already using that SOS policy service?
We have talked to them.
Okay.
And started, yeah.
That is something that we, we started offering to our members a few years back, and we're very excited. Prior to that, there was a lot of departments that they were just exchanging policies. You have a policy and this, you have a policy on that. So the pool decided to make an investment and we're providing the sample policies that are vetted to, to be Texas compliant. So we're very excited of that service. We provide training for law enforcement personnel. We can do it onsite, there's also some on online training options out there. The resistant response simulator, this is our, a lot of people call it shooting simulator. We don't call it that because we're not, we're not training our officers on how to shoot. The whole purpose of that simulator is to help our officers diffuse a situation and not have it to use force. Because again, we've been on the news a lot because of alleged use of force. And so we want to make sure that we don't do that. Understanding is that they're developing a new, a new program here, sort of something that we want to bring to Hill County. Some of the other services that we have, training webinars. Jack just did a webinar two weeks ago. As a matter of fact, the presentation he did for you today was a presentation he did through a webinar. We highly encourage everybody to join us on our webinar, they're on a monthly basis. Sometimes we have them on HR, safety, risk management, law enforcement, you name it. Jack mentioned the safety equipment program. Regional workshops, you guys are going to be hosting two regional workshops? Diana, where is the HR?
HR will be here in Hill County on September 21st. So go out on our website if you want to go. There's limited space based on the availability of that facility. I think it's in your justice center, so come on out. We appreciate you all letting us show the facility.
And then Jack, October 19th, the Ali Lottie Center, it's going to be a party. You're going to have fun, free, lots of lunch, it's going to be a good time. And then of course, we have a county management risk conference. This is a conference that has evolved over the past few years. We're up to 400 attendees and we have wonderful speakers in addition to our speakers. We have wonderful outside speakers that come in and help us. The county gets two, up to two reimbursements to attend this conference. Ida being a board member, I think you get it free, so you still have two that can come and join you. And we highly encourage you to come and join us for this conference. The safety award program that Jack was talking about, I really would like for you guys to consider giving Jack an opportunity to come and institute a safety program so we can participate and try to earn the safety award. You have a lot of good things going your way. There's some room for us to improve, but you have a lot of things going your way. So give us the opportunity, and that's the reason we're here is because I want to make sure that you understand that you have resources available to you, and we want to make sure that we bring those resources to you. So please give a chance to Jack to schedule the safety committee training. And you'll be surprised how something like that can help you. As a matter of fact, I have a testimonial here.
So at the Gray County, we had over 500 employees. And at one time, Gray County was at the highest rate on our workers' comp. When Jack came in and he said, hey, we want to get this safety program working and have you go in and get this program up and working. Of course, as an HR director with nearly 600 employees, I'm thinking, oh my gosh, I'm going to have something else I'm going to need to take care of. But I can tell you that, that when we got that program going and I set up a system, and Jack helped me as well, I'm going to tell you that that workers' comp program ran like clockwork. I mean, it was, it is the simplest program. So we went from the highest county of having the most workers' comp down to one of the very lowest. And it saved us so much money. In fact, in the initial beginning of that safety program, they actually were giving, they actually gave us money back because we had reduced our workers' comp so low that we actually got some. I actually have some pictures of myself with, with a huge check with my commissioner's court. And that was a lot, it was, it was a big deal, and it still is a big deal. But I can tell you, I, I'm just going to tell you that, again, I kept thinking, oh my gosh, this is going to be a lot of work and that sort of thing. But I can, I can tell you that we sent out the first report of injuries, my commissioner's court on a board. We did the resolution. With that resolution, we also got some excellence and awards on our safety program. What we would send out, so once we got our committee together and our committee members realized that, hey, this is not a point at who did this wrong or why is this happening? It was more about getting just the paperwork done so that we could process things through. And the system that we had set up, it, from the, from the time that I got my first report of injury to the time that I actually got everything together, it was probably a 20-minute process. But honestly, anybody in my office could go in and open up a file and look in that file and see the very last thing that happened, whether that person was released back to work, whether the person was out, if they needed to be put on family medical leave. It was the easiest system and it worked so well. And back, and back when Jack first started it, because the system was, was designed to really do such a good job as it still is, Jack would come into my office and I would have these binders. He would not tell me when he was coming in, and he would come and get those binders. Do you remember that, Jack?
It was a long time ago, yeah.
Yes, and he would come in and get these binders. Well, these binders were set up in the precincts and in the courthouse. So when I had a first report of injury, all he had to do was come in and get those binders. He would come unannounced, so I never knew when he was coming. He would load those up in a box and he would take them back to Austin. And then he would, he would go through those reports and that and see where we were. But I can tell you that that system was such a good system that it, I can tell you, we went from the, from the very top to the very lowest. And it's so easy, I didn't, I can help you. I'm just going to tell you, it's, it's the simplest thing because again, once I got my commissioner's court, the sheriff's office, of course, is one of the biggest offices that we had the injuries in. The sheriff's office worked so well with us. My office was trained that if you had the first report of injury, you've had an incident investigation report. And that report needed to be signed by the, by the supervisor as well as the employee. And again, in the sheriff's office, the sheriff's office, all the guys in the sheriff's office knew, all of the lieutenants, captains, everybody, they knew that if they sent that report down to us, they knew that that incident report needed to be signed by one of the supervisors. And if it wasn't, they would send it back. And the girls on my front desk, they would look for that incident report to make sure they were signed, the first report of injury was signed. And once you did that, I mean, it was just so quick and it was so easy. And I can tell you, you can save a lot of money in your budget because if you get those workers' comp claims down, it saves you so much. And it, and there are times, you know, if, if you didn't have that system, I can tell you, simply because I know and I've done it, if you don't have a system set up like that, those people out of workers' comp, they could be out there forever. And you, because you don't see them and you're not with them, you can easily let that get off of your mind because you have so much other stuff to do. But if you have that system set up, you can easily go to something and say, hey, Johnny's not, he's not back at work. You know, what's going on with him? And so we had a guy that was actually bailing hay, but he couldn't come to work. And so we ended up putting an investigator on him and finally, we got him, you know, in the end, he did not, he left the county employment. But at least we were able to stop that payment to him each week while he was bailing hay and getting a, getting a check from workers' comp. So that system is a great system. It, it's very easily set up. I'd be more than happy to help you. I told Jack, I mean, just call me. It takes just a little bit, but it does take the commissioner's court to back, to back that program up. But it's not that hard. And I don't know, Sheriff, how many you have in your, in your department, but I do know that in Gray County, the sheriff's office is really where I had most of my injuries kind of from. But, and our sheriff was fantastic. He, I don't know if you know Maxie Surlyon, but Maxie, he had all of his guys and they were so, they were very, very good and held it us because we, that's where a lot of it was coming from. But I can, I just can't tell you how much that program helped us. I mean, it, it was a fantastic program. But the commissioners, they had to, they really had to get on board as well with the commissioner's court because you do have to sign the resolution and get that, get that done. And so it's, and I'd be more than happy to help you set that up.
We're almost done here. There's been a few changes on filing a claim. My best recommendation, biggest thing that I want to highlight is now we have a way to report cybersecurity claims. If you fear that your network was tampered with, that you experienced an event, please do not hesitate to report that as soon as possible. Most of the counties in the area subcontract the services for, for computer, for IT. Please give us an opportunity for us to work with that individual because there's certain things that we can do to help you identify how much penetration was the, the event into your network. A lot of times what they recommend is that you wipe the computer and start over again. When you do that, you lose some of the forensics. So please give us a chance. The best way for you to report a claim, go up to risk management in our website, scroll down, if there's a tab that says file claim, click on that. And there you're going to have an option to file an online claim and also file a hard copy claim. I thought there was an email that was sent out last night on changes to the workers' compensation. I don't know if you had a chance to report and see that yet.
I don't think so. I walked in and Diana was in my office.
Okay, so look for that email from Sid Wick. They, they just changed, coming in to affect your life first. Now we have a section where you can file a claim for privacy and security, which is the cyber, and that is something new. You have any questions on, on this portal, please do not hesitate to call us and we'll be glad to, to help you as much as we can. Real quick, we've been thinking about you, even though we, we were not on the road, we were thinking about our members and we had a lot of meetings when we were sitting at home, talking. We had a lot of virtual meetings. And so we developed a plan that we wanted to do. And I'm going to tell you what, I put in my plan for Hill County. And one is assist a member with the upcoming renewals. Obviously, you guys came on board in January 1st, so I was still at home, unfortunately. But I'm looking forward to continue working with you on that. We wanted to highlight automobile liability and the autofiscal damage loss ratio, and that's what we did today. I think there's room for us to work. I'll be working with Jack, Jack is going to be working with you, but I think we can work on that. I want to support Jack to make his goal of developing a safety program possible. So I want to work with Jack. I started with TAG being a safety rep like Jack, so that's in my blood. So anything I can help with, I can help. And then we wanted to pass information as to how to protect your property from hail. Those are some of the things that we wanted to do. This is a living document for us. From this meeting, I'm going to say, when I ask Carmen to follow up with you, Sheriff, on the law enforcement policies and procedures, things of that nature. And then of course, like I said, I want to help Jack help institute the safety program. So that's what I have for you. And as far as your risk control consultant, you will?
Yes, I've had a couple of things that I have on my to-do list. Number one, I've completed a multi-line claims review with Ida. And we checked that off, that's completed. We've done a needs risk assessment, that's completed, check. We've also done a meet the new special projects coordinator, who we're going to work closely with this year, check. Next, I've done a follow-up inspection of the tire, waste tire facility that we were able to go out there today and take a quick look at it, so that's checked off. I have two pending items, the accident prevention plan, earned a safety award, we want to get that done, that's pending. And then finally, I wanted to do some DOT drug and alcohol testing training with road and bridge, okay? We don't have, we haven't had any training out there for that topic. And so we want to schedule some DOT drug and alcohol training with our CDL drivers because they have commercial driver's licenses for the, like the dump trucks. And it's a federal law. And belly dumps and stuff, yes, sir.
Were you talking about the tire dealership?
Yes.
Did you figure out how to get that over for me?
Well, you know, that's a pretty big place and it's, it's a five-acre facility. There's four million tires out there at least and not more. And so I know it's, it's one of those things that you just inherited because the, the previous owner didn't, didn't do his business like he should and was pulling away on taxes. And of course, you tried to sell it at the tax, at the auction and nobody wanted to buy it because it's...
And PCEQ didn't do their business for the show either.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's just, it just depends on what it is. And I, I know it's, it's kind of like a thorn in your side. It's like, you know, but it is something we have inherited, unfortunately. And so it just, yeah, it just, you know, so. But I had a chance to go out there and look at that, at the facility and lots of snakes out there, be careful, you know? So.
I can imagine.
Yeah, you don't want to.
I can imagine.
Yeah. Well, it's, no.
Yeah, it's, so anyways, so that's, that's what I'm going to plan on working with the county is on the APP, safety board, and the DOT drug and alcohol. is on the APP, safety board, and the DOT drug and alcohol training for CDL drivers.
Diana?
And yes, so we identified, I had the plan to do our risk assessment. We did it today and we identified getting your policy manual. So we're just going to take that. We're going to, we walked out this morning, went to lunch and just pick it up. So we'll get that before we leave here, make some recommendations for you and then provide you all training later this year, the hiring and firing documentation training.
Very good. And from Carmen on the law enforcement, her recommendations included providing sexual misconduct and sexual harassment training for jail personnel. And then she also wants to do an assessment for patrol and jail operations. And that's pretty much it. So I think there's going to be more stuff that we can provide. Anyway, so that's what we have for Hill County. We're looking forward for the opportunity. Like I said, this is, for me, this is my first address at Discord. Looking forward to continue working with you guys. One of the things that I want to emphasize is that during COVID, we learn a lot about, about us. We learn about our capacity to be able to deliver services. We learn about areas that we could probably improve, but we learned the virtual world. And how many of you have seen the progressive commercial where they were doing a Zoom meeting and Flo was telling Jamie, mute your phone? And Jamie saying that I'm muted, but of course, everybody can hear Jamie. We were, our first meetings at Tag, we were like that, you know? Mute your phone. I'm muted. No, you're not. You hear babies and dogs and crying, everybody. I might say that now our staff meetings are pretty good. Very seldom do we have any technical issues other than bandwidth for some times. But for the most part, they, we learn how to navigate through that. We learn how to conduct meetings virtually. We are, we are who we are. We, since I've been with Texas 1993, we've been on the road. And that is not going to change. But one thing that we learned is that we can provide services to you really fast if you're open to the idea to do a virtual meeting. If you have an HR matter that you want to discuss, we can schedule a conference call real quick. We could do it from the, from the road. We can do a webex or we can do just a conference call. That is something that we learned how to use during this period of time. So we've been there, but we never had to use it. Now we did. So I remember there was times when people would call one of our consultants and they would drive five, six hours for a one or two hour meeting. There's no need for that. We can do that meeting virtually and, you know, if the member is, is open to that idea. So again, there's another way for us to deliver a service to you. So we look forward for that opportunity. Last but not least, we're on Facebook now. So Facebook, www.facebook.com/tagrmp. There's a lot of articles that we're posting out there. That's what we recognize. A lot of the, the members are doing a lot of good things out there. We want to see Hill County in there when we do that. So please give us a chance. Sign up to Facebook. And that's all I have. So Diana, do you have anything to say?
I appreciate y'all's time today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jack?
That's it. I want to thank y'all for your time, your patience today. I know we gave you a lot of information. We're looking forward to working closely with you in 2021. And thank you for being here today.
Rita?
I just wanted to let y'all know I have some cards here. So if y'all would like to have one of my cards, so you'll have my contact information. And again, don't hesitate to call me. I'm glad to hear from you, so.
Ida?
I'm good. Did y'all get all that?
We got it all. We want to thank you guys for coming today. You made a good presentation. You gave us a lot of information to think about. I can tell you from experience, Tag, you've been a very valuable resource to this county. We look forward to seeing you come back again as your schedule permit.
Absolutely.
Is there any other questions or comments?
No. Then this meeting is adjourned at 14:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you.